I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am always so happy when there's a crowd here and I get to hear that, it just sounds wonderful, well done. We are at the consent agenda, meeting of minutes for March 13th, 2017.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion and second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, we move on to comments from citizens present on agenda and on agenda items. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to bring to the council's attention any item not listed on the agenda for public hearing or public comment. Comments are limited to five minutes per citizen and the city recorder will use the light system. Speakers may not yield their time to others and as a general rule, this is not a time for exchange of questions. At the conclusion of this agenda item, a counselor may discuss or raise questions regarding an item presented by a citizen. The mayor has the authority to reduce the time allowed for comment in accordance with the number of persons present and signed up to speak. We have a lot. Okay. So, just for folks who haven't been here before, just want to give you a little background on what goes on up here. I can hear almost every conversation, so if you want to have a side conversation, please step on out into the hallway, close the door behind you, and go have your say. If you agree vigorously with what someone said, that's great, keep it to yourself. There's not a time for applause and cheering or cat calls and yelling, so save it for later. This is a business meeting, we're going to try to get through this as quickly as possible. I'm so excited to see so many people here. It's sometimes lonely, but all these great faces and welcome. So, we'll jump right on in. Susan Nelson. And then just a general provision again for everyone, you can sit in either chair, pull the microphone up like about three, four inches away from your face, you do not have to give your address, just give us your full name if you could, first and last.
My name is Susan Nelson. This is kind of a surprise thing for me, it was suggested I come out and see city council in action.
Welcome.
I run the Posh Wash Laundromat here in town, and I'm part of the Warm and Dry Program, and it's just really nice to have an opportunity briefly to just see who's who, and I mean, we see each other around town so much, and everyone's so friendly and smiles, but it's nice to know maybe who to come to and talk when we need some help with things, so I'm just really pleased to be here. I've got not much else to say.
I have a question though.
Certainly, sir.
What's your involvement with the homeless shelter?
We work hand in hand together, so I'm a drop-off spot for, so many people are working, you know, during the day and they need to come in and drop things off and whatnot, and I delegate off to who needs what, whether it's my sister's place or the warming shelter, our Warm and Dry Program, because we have a clothing closet onsite as well, and any of the different charities, including Beach Town Thrift, so it's kind of like a big group of fun people I've gotten in work with that are doing some amazing things.
And for those that don't know you, Posh Wash is?
We're the Posh Wash Laundromat.
Laundromat.
Here in Lincoln City, yes, and we're the base of the Warm and Dry Program.
And you can always come up and push your business, seriously, you can always, if you want to tell them, it's okay.
I will do. I bet everyone knows where it's at, I think, but it's all good, yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, my pleasure, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
In addition to owning and operating your own business, how many hours a week do you spend with the homeless shelter in providing these services that are, you're doing, volunteer work? You personally?
Okay, so first, let me clarify, A, I'm a worker bee.
Oh.
I work for Martin and Bernadette Sleep, and they're the wonderful owners, they've been there forever, so I'm the worker bee. Probably, wow, okay, timelines, what do you think? Well, I work six days a week, no, five days a week, pretty much continuously, continuously. We have a lot of people coming in and out for services, I mean, there's certain days of the week that are concentrated that should come during Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, 11 to 3, where we're doing the concentrated services, but then everything doesn't always fall into that box, does it? Because when it rains, it pours around here, so we kind of take care of people as they come in.
Thank you for helping.
Does that help you, Riley?
Sure, thank you for helping.
Okay.
I just wanted to have, you know, time spent that you'd volunteer, that's blasphemous.
Okay, time spent.
It's okay, it's sufficient.
Thirty hours, maybe?
That's significant.
Thanks, Susan, appreciate it.
Right, thank you.
Okay, Louis Smith. And then just a reminder for council, please make sure you get the chair's attention, and then the chair will recognize you and you can ask your questions.
Good evening, my name is Louis Smith, and this isn't a prepared speech, it's just notes because I've never done one of these before, so I try to stay on track. I just, I'm a business owner here in Lincoln City, and I just wanted to share my two senses to why I feel that we have a need for a permanent warming shelter here in the city. First and foremost, from a humanitarian perspective, when we first bought the business, I installed a surveillance system, not only in the business but in the shopping, the strip mall where we're located. Until 15 minutes ago, I didn't know that Susan was going to be here, but we are neighbors to Posh Wash, and the, there is a preponderance of homeless people that hang out at the 24-hour laundromat. And, as is my habit, I sometimes check in in the wee hours of the morning remotely just to see the cameras and see what's going on. And, I was saddened, this was over a year ago, I logged in and I'm watching a guy sitting on the bench twirling his socks rapidly. I had no idea what he was doing, so I watched for a while, and I realized this was a really bad weather night, and he was drawing his socks. And on closer inspection, I realized this guy was just dripping wet. It was just, again, one of those cats and dog rain nights, and he was just dripping wet. And it made me feel really bad, and so we decided to put together some bags, like little survival bags, with socks, that was the first thing that came to mind, mittens, hat, thermal blanket, water and whatnot, and hand them out or just leave them there where they tended to gather. But, as, the more I thought about it, it was, I felt, you know, what else can we do here? And I am someone that I put my money where my mouth is, I've donated to Angels Anonymous, Family Promise, my sister's place, name a few, in hopes, you know, just to try to help the situation. Now, from a financial perspective, businesses lose business because potential customers don't want to go into the business when they see homeless people hanging around or present. And just yesterday, I was told by two separate people next door at the laundromat that they were uncomfortable going in there because of, you know, they felt scared or whatever their rationale was, they just were nervous about it. Now, you know, we, well, it's Lincoln City, we incur costs whenever we call the police because someone's sleeping in the business or causing a problem, and further, if a homeless person gets hypothermia or pneumonia due to exposure, we incur additional costs for using emergency services, ambulance, hospital and whatnot. I think, you know, in summation, that the homeless problem impacts the city, the locals, tourists, the businesses, and from a preventative point of view, I think that's why a permanent warming shelter would help reduce some of the problems and costs of the homeless situations that currently exist. I think, you know, the homeless aren't just homeless on really cold nights, they're not homeless, on cold nights, they're not homeless on windy, I mean, they are homeless on windy nights, and they're homeless on rainy nights, and pretty much they're homeless every night. And, I just, I think a permanent shelter would be a, would help solve a lot of problems.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Appreciate you coming in, don't be a stranger.
Thank you.
Tim Milton.
Wanted to show up first of all to thank you all for all your due, Timothy Milton. Also wanted to publicly thank all the volunteers that came out and helped us. We bedded over 800 people this year, compared to the last several years combined, at least twice as much. So, we're doing a lot more with a lot less than we ever had, and I really encourage that we take a serious look at finding some solutions to the problem. I think you're going to see a pretty interesting little report from Amanda, and we are looking to do so much more. We need a little bit of financial help, a little bit of guidance, but we are here to do what you guys want us to do in the way that we can, so I just, I wanted to say thank you to all the people that are helping the situation and for you guys talking with us tonight. Thank you.
Shannon Locke.
Good evening, my name is Shannon Locke, and I'm a resident and homeowner in Lincoln City. I'm here in regard to the eclipse, and in particular, to give input on developing a plan for the villages in the Sayusla National Forest that share a boundary and together comprise the open space north of town.
Shannon, can I have you pull that forward just a little bit, the microphone closer to you, just a little bit. Thank you.
Last week, the Sayusla National Forest published their plan for two key viewing areas, Mount Hibo and Mary's Peak. A detailed and enforceable plan has been developed and is being publicly broadcast well in advance with dual goals, to make sure that people have a positive and safe experience while protecting the meadow environments from being trampled. It states, "We love how excited people are to witness this natural phenomenon, and it is our intent to welcome them to the national forest to do so. Access will be managed to provide a unique viewing experience, ensuring public safety, clear access for emergency vehicles, and protection of sensitive meadows." The plan for Hibo and Mary's Peak includes no camping, with trailheads being monitored and opened at 6:00 a.m. on the day of the eclipse, no overnight parking in the roads leading up to the trailheads. Mary's Peak has a campground that will be closed to the public and used by the Forest Service to monitor the event and protect the fragile meadows. Hibo has a no camping ban in place to protect the meadows already, and it will be enforced. The Forest Service is now working in partnership with the Nature Conservancy on a plan for Cascade Head, where no overnight camping is allowed, and it will be enforced as well. At city council's behest, that plan could extend to the Sayusla Forest bordering Lincoln City, which includes the beloved and well-worn Thumb. The Westwind Stewardship Group is another potential partner, as Westwind Camp shares boundaries with the Sayusla and sends hundreds of campers up to the Thumb via their private camp. Lincoln City needs a detailed plan for the forest and fragile meadows that don't include being the camp fallback for people who arrive with no place to stay. Currently, the area is managed for day use, and there are no facilities or adequate overnight parking. Imagine what it would be like after two, three, even four days of camping with no water, garbage, or sanitation facilities? Human feces creating a health crisis, trash left to blow away in the wind, branches and small trees hacked down to build fires in the tall, dry grass, creating a potential for forest fire that could trap campers and endanger homes? Has the city insurance carrier been notified of the eclipse plans? Is there a need for additional insurance when planning an event that knowingly will create an emergency? Will the insurers pay if someone fell to their death from the cliffs in the dark because the city condoned overnight camping? While we can't stop people from coming to Lincoln City for the eclipse, and I'm not suggesting that we do so, please, city council, enforce a ban on overnight camping in the headlands. Don't put our natural resources at risk. Partner with the Sayusla National Forest, which has solid experience controlling access and unwanted activity on the national forest. Consider some of the methods the Forest Service is using, such as contracting with shuttles to bring people to the trailheads. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And I do have copies of the Hibo and Mary's Peak.
If you just hand them to our city recorder, she'll get them to us.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, Tabitha.
Congratulations. Hello, my name is Tabitha Nowark. I'm a member of the Lincoln City Parks Board and have worked on the project advisory committee for the new Parks Plan. In addition, I am a Lincoln City native, a mother, a former program manager for our local Moms Support Group, and a business consultant for the Lincoln City Food Pantry. Working in Lincoln City with nonprofit groups and with the Parks Board has made me painfully aware of the shortage of parks and community programs we have available for our citizens and visitors. While the ones in place are appreciated and well-managed and cared for, we simply have outgrown them. In a demographic where young families are coming and then often leaving, I believe it's important to stand out as a city that says, "Stay, we have something for you, we value all ages, abilities," and here's proof. And by adopting the new Parks Plan, we will not only be showing practically that we care, but we'll be investing in the future stability of Lincoln City, making ourselves known as a community that has our act together. We need a community park desperately entaft. We need neighborhood parks scattered throughout the city that will draw people out of the depression and isolation that many of us young families experience living here. We need safe, covered places for young kids to play in a climate where it rains 60% maybe of the year. We need to bring back the Parks Director position that can supervise and drive park and recreation development. The plan you will vote on tonight addresses these priorities and will give us direction and guidance for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Tabitha. Yeah, and you just pointed out to me, if anyone wants to speak on the Parks, we're going to have a public hearing on that later, so that was my bad for not noticing that. And thank you. And I'm assuming, Tabitha, you're congratulating me for Becky and Erin? We're going to be, oh, I can't even get choked up on this, we're going to become grandparents again, so yay, thank you for that. So, everything else just really doesn't matter. Let's see, that's all I care about, I got a grandbaby. Okay, enough personal stuff. Andrew.
Andrew Schmitz. Hello, my name is Andrew Schmitz, I'm a resident of Lincoln City, and I'm a volunteer at the Lincoln City Warming Shelter, so I'm here to support them, and wasn't really expecting to speak, but I saw that we had opportunities to do so, so I just wanted to share a little bit of my experience and views on the warming shelter. Since I've lived in Lincoln City, I've felt more of a sense of a community here than I have anywhere else I've ever lived, and I think, to me, as I see it, the true sense of community means that everybody in the community is taken care of, and a lot of times, people that are on the periphery of society don't get taken care of, but since being involved in the warming shelter, I see all these people that need help being helped, and I think it's a great thing, so anything we can do to improve that or expand that is excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming up, really appreciate it. Let's see, Feather, you're going to speak on the Parks, so we'll hold you over. Cheryl Johnson. Well, is that going to be part of the Parks? Okay, do you want to wait till that part? Okay, thank you, I'm so sorry. And then the next one's the Park Plan too, so anyone who is not going to speak on the Park Plan, who did not sign up and like to come forward and say something, now's your time. Seeing none, we'll move on, thank you. Again, just for folks who've been here for the first time, it's painless, please come, let us know what you're thinking, what you're doing, it really helps when we make decisions, because it's your city, and we need to hear from you. All right, we are moving on to the presentation for the warming shelter. Amanda.
Hello, my name is Amanda Cherry Holmes, and I am here on behalf of Lincoln City Warming Shelter. I thought my board was going to come with me, but I guess not, that's okay. So, basically, this is a presentation on the season that we just went through, who we are, what we do, and where we want to go from here. We really like this quote, because it really just says a lot about who we are as an organization. "Make a career out of humanity, it will enrich your spirit as nothing else can. It will give you that rare sense of nobility that can only spring from love and selflessly helping your fellow man. You will make a greater person of yourself, a greater nation of your country, and a finer world to live in," by Martin Luther King Jr. This is basically what our mission is. We are operated by a coalition of people representing nonprofits, faith-based communities, and regular citizens, providing warming shelters in Lincoln City and surrounding areas during the temperatures of 39 degrees and below, December 1st through March 1st. This is basically what it looks like on the inside of our single shelter. We have the congregational church that is our host location, with, we have two different rooms for single men, and then we have a room for single women. There is a kitchen and dining room area, as well as a hangout spot where they can watch movies and play cards and just kind of socialize with the volunteers and just get a sense of community. This is what our family shelter looks like, which is hosted at First Baptist Church. It's literally right down the street from the other shelter, which makes it really easy to go back and forth when the season was going. We, in this area, it's a little bit different, because we're dealing with families, we have a children's area, just to make sure that the kids have something to do, because there's nothing worse than having a three-year-old that has nothing to do. This is our notification process protocol, so basically, the operations manager goes to weather.gov or NOAA to see what the nighttime low is going to be. If it's going to be 39 degrees and below, then we open. This is something that we look at seven days in advance, that way we give people enough time to get prepared, give our volunteers enough time, give our host sites enough time, and to also put the shout-out on Facebook and other social media pages, so that everybody has enough time to know what's going on, and then, last but not least, the police station and the hospital are both notified the day of, that way they can tell people where to go if they need to. This is kind of just how things go. For families, the shelter would open at 4:00, basically to be open for when school gets out for kids. For singles, it's open at 6:00, and then 6:00 to 7:30, we have some dinner and provided with coffee and water bottles. Between 7:30 and 10:00 is when we have our hangout time, so they can go to sleep if they want to, they can hang out if they want to, watch movies. 10:00, we have a very strict policy of lights out, and no one comes into the shelter unless escorted by a police officer. This is to ensure the safety of everybody in the building, the volunteers, and the shelter, other shelter guests. Then we wake up at 6:00 in the morning, between 6:30 and 7:30, we have breakfast, and they also have a snack lunch that is provided before they leave, and at 8:00 in the morning is when the shelters close. We have supplies that are available to shelter guests at the shelter, things like clothes, which would include pants, shirts, warm jackets, hats, gloves, scarves, interview pieces, socks, shoes, toiletry, things like shampoo, conditioner, lotion, body soap, toothbrush, toothpaste, the works, feminine products. This is something that a lot of places don't think about, but homeless women really have an issue with getting connected to feminine products for them. Emergency Mylar blankets, which retain 90% of body heat and are waterproof. We have emergency Mylar tents, this is something new that we're doing this year for people that have pets, because the shelter, we can't house any pets, and so because of that, we came up with kind of a Band-Aid solution, so that we're not sending pet owners away in the cold. They have a little tent, and we give them a quilt, so that they can stay warm with their animal. Bus tickets is something new that we're doing this year, basically because we're talking about people that probably don't have a car, and so we have tickets that get them to and from the shelter, so that, say, if they have a job interview somewhere, or if they need to get somewhere, they can, and then they have a way to get back to the shelter if we're open. Shower vouchers, this is through the community center, which has recently become a problem because we've used a lot of shower vouchers, and I can talk more about that later, and laundry vouchers. When people are given basic things, like the ability to take a shower, wear clean clothes, and groom themselves, they are able to face society and get back on their feet. Expecting a homeless person to function in society without rehabilitation is comparable to handing someone a raw steak without a way to cook it. Crazy, right? Think about it. Here's our statistics. We were open for 47 nights this year. The total number of cots occupied were 779. A breakdown of that for how many people we helped, we helped 131 different people. 31 of those people were locals, 100 of them were transients. Of those, there were 96 men, 35 women, and four children. We helped 12 veterans, 13 Native American people, four African-American people, and seven Hispanic people. We gave 204 shower vouchers, 467 bus tickets, 48 laundry vouchers, and seven Mylar tents for pet owners. We had 68 volunteers, and we pulled off 3,073 volunteer hours, which is pretty amazing if you ask me, we have an incredible group of people. And we provided 2,344 meals, and of the pet owners, we also got a bag of dog food and portioned them out, so that we didn't have to send them away without food also, and so we gave 21 meals to dogs. Due to the strain on the host locations, we were unable to open the shelters at 50 degrees and below, as well as unable to open during hazardous stormy weather conditions, both of which pose a medical emergency threat of hypothermia for our homeless population. Hypothermia is real here. Hypothermia is the condition of having an abnormally low body temperature, typically one that is dangerously low. Causes of hypothermia are exposure to cold air, water, wind, or rain. Your body temperature can drop to a low level at temperatures of 50 degrees and below, or higher in wet and windy weather, or if you are in 60 to 70-degree water. Other causes, certain medical conditions such as diabetes, thyroid conditions, some medications, severe trauma, or using drugs and/or alcohol. We have an alarming number of people that we help that use drugs and/or alcohol, and so when you're talking about hypothermia and people that are on something, it makes it even more extreme. Another thing that people don't even take into consideration most of the time is the wind chill factor, which is also a very real thing. Wind chill is a perceived decrease in air temperature felt by the body on exposed skin due to the flow of air. A surface loses heat through conduction, convection, and radiation. The rate of convection depends both on the difference in the temperature between the surface and the fluid surrounding it, and the velocity of that fluid with respect to the surface. The faster the wind speed, the more the surface cools. In other words, the air feels colder than it is because of the chilling effect of the wind on the skin. And in extreme conditions, this will increase the risk of adverse effects such as frostbite. You know, around here, it's normal to have, you know, say, say just for example, 20 to 25 mile-per-hour wind, and if you look at this table, at 40 degrees with a 25 mile-an-hour wind, that feels like 29 degrees to someone who's homeless. I was able to look at a website that keeps track of all of our temperatures for every single day of last year, and if we were, if we were open addressing the posing medical emergency due to hypothermia, we would have been open every single month for no less than 10 days per month. The total number of days we would have been open would have been 251. We were actually open for 13, which means that for 238 days, our entire homeless population was in emergency medical status and at risk of hypothermia, which does not include the wind chill factor. So where do we go from here? The first step is to find a permanent location for the warming shelter, reason being, it's a huge strain on the host locations to be open for so many nights, so we need another location, a permanent location, so that we are able to open when temperatures reach 50 and below, and we are also able to turn it into a year-round emergency shelter rather than just seasonal. How do we make this happen? We get together, we have paid staff, we have key community volunteers, and we also incorporate shelter guest volunteers, meaning, say, when they come in the door and they sign in, we have a cot that's ready to go, we have a wall that has a blanket and a pillow, and they set up their own bed, the next morning, they break down their own bed, they clean up after themselves, so that we are basically teaching them responsibility all over again, because when you have hit rock bottom, it's really, really hard to, I mean, obviously, they're where they are because of irresponsibility, so you have to teach them how to be responsible The facility has to have a commercial kitchen, showers, or the capability to put in more showers due to the strain on the community center, separate areas, or the ability to create separate areas for men, women, and families, enough room in each separate area for 20 people, so we need something that we could house 40 people at any given point in time, and preferably, a location within city limits so that guests can get to work and use the public transit. These are our guidelines, basically how it works. To make a super-long story short, there's, we don't accept alcohol or drugs, we have a vetting system for when they first come in, everybody has to sign in every single time, there's no smoking on the grounds in or around the shelter, and then it just goes on about how we can't allow pets, no weapons. Um, no weapons are permitted. If they do have weapons, then we have a sign-in system for them. And now that we know that we need a year-round emergency shelter program, why haven't we done that yet? Because we have to be the change that we wish to see. We have to do something in order for, to get a result. So what can you do to help? You can become a volunteer, even if it's only a couple of hours. A little bit of your time makes a big difference. You can donate your old jackets, clothes in good condition, and shoes. Your, your old outfit could land someone a job. Help us financially. We are in desperate need of a permanent location for Lincoln City warming shelters, so that we can save more lives. Your donation could be the foundation of a brand-new program. Help us make history for Lincoln City, and let us be known as the smallest community fighting homelessness with the biggest heart. Together, we have and will continue to move mountains.
Amanda?
Does anybody have any questions?
Oh, Amanda, this isn't the time for the, the audience to yell out questions to you. So if you wanna get some questions from the council, we can do that.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I do.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Sorry, I have to look down here. Um, thank you. That was, um, that was an interesting presentat- presentation, and provided a lot of facts. I, um, am curious, though, um, you cited a lot of, um, volunteer hours, which means that you have a lot of actual volunteers that help you, and now you're thirty-nine degrees or lower, right?
Mm-hmm.
And you wanna go to fifty?
I wanna go to fifty.
So if you, if everything lined up, all the stars lined up, and you could, um, change that part of your, your, um, direction, would you have the volunteers to support that many more hours or days?
We would, um, because a lot of the volunteer hours would then be basically given to the shelter guests. So, a lot of the volunteers that we have, like, say, they come in and they set up the cots, or they come in and they cook the meals and things like that. If we incorporate shelter guest volunteers, then a lot of those volunteer hours could be given to the people that are staying there, so I guess, in a sense, they're earning their keep.
But do you have enough of the volunteers that are there? Um, when I was visiting there, um, I think there were four, if I could, if I recall, four volunteers that weren't guest volunteers, and those are the, the core volunteers are the ones that I'm curious about. I appreciate the guest volunteers, the ones that are staying there that helped to take care of their own needs, but, but over and above that, the people that would come to volunteer.
It would be, it would be a mixture of regular volunteers, but then we would also incorporate a paid staff, because, say, for example, overnight volunteers was the hardest thing to get, because it's a really long shift, and it's in the middle of the night. So you would have to pay people to spend the night, to basically have a graveyard shift. So you would incorporate shelter volunteers, regular volunteers, and then there's certain positions that you would have to make, paid positions.
Of, um, you and your board...
Senator Hinton, I'm sorry, can you get the mic a little bit closer?
Oh, sorry. Trying to be gentle about this, um, I guess I better just blast it out there. Um, have you and your board done, um, an analysis, loosely speaking, of how many more people that you would need, and how many actual paid staff, and, and, or are you just at that point now?
We have looked into it, and, um, we would definitely like to talk further with it. We would just need to call another meeting and get to, basically, all of our ducks in a row, but yes, we have talked about it, and we do have an idea.
So you're kind of at that with your stage of planning, then? More information, that would be helpful. And as you know, if I may continue, um, as you know, there are, um, well, my last count, I could be wrong, but there were twelve nonprofit organizations that are in Lincoln City that are helping the homeless, and a lot of them coordinate and work together, some have their standalone, um, type of, um, organization where they either can't or don't work, um, with the others. So I'm just kinda curious, um, with yours, um, and what you've presented, and kind of the bigger, bigger, bigger picture, do you see a way of actually, if there was a place, I think that's what you're, where you're going, is if you had a physical place, and I know the church is overextended, um, we've heard that in other testimony, then, um, would that then open its doors, so to speak, to other organizations? Do you see coordination with others, with other, um, nonprofits to fill in where the niche that you aren't doing? I mean, you, you say, "Good morning and see you later," but during the day, there are other organizations that are actually, um, working with the folks to help them get their feet on the ground in a different way. You mentioned alcohol and other addictions and those type of things that, that cause people to be where they are, and then there are those organizations that are working with those folks to, to get, to get to the next step.
Absolutely. See, the, the short answer to your question, absolutely. Uh, we are currently working with other organizations in town. We're, basically, we're kinda working with everybody. It's become a network, and basically, what we're trying to do is we're trying to pick up the pieces where other organizations are exhausted. So say, for example, My Sister's Place and My, and Family Promise is a prime example. They're awesome organizations, and they're great in what they do, but they have a cap. So say, once, once they've reached that cap, then where are they supposed to send people to? So we wanna be the place that they can send people to once they are full, or vice versa. Say, we have a family that comes to us, and we're like, "Oh, you know, My Sister's Place would be great for you," or "Family Promise would be great for you." So what we're trying to do is partner with everybody in town, and we're also, um, closely working with Homeless Solutions, which is, I'm also, um, on the board of Home, Homeless Solutions as well, which, Homeless Solutions provides services, whereas the warming shelter provides the permanent building. So, in the long-term goal, yes, we definitely wanna come together and work together as a team. Short-term goal, we're trying to save people's lives and get them off the street.
I wanted to maybe, uh, speak to the question they asked.
Sam, I'm gonna have to just reintroduce yourself.
I'm Tim Elton, Homeless Solutions and Emergency Warming Shelter. Um, by having a permanent location, the needs of the volunteers will train, change drastically, because it won't be a tear-down, set-up, tear-down, set-up, tear-down, set-up. We are wasting a lot of time doing the same repetitive tasks, because we don't know whether we're gonna be open even. So if we had places set up, per se, for sleeping, they would stay that. And so by the fact that we are constantly scrambling to close, open up, close, open up, close, and be mobile like that, that creates a lot of the strain on the volunteers. So having an established position where someone is coordinating it, working eight hours a day to make this thing run, would alleviate a lot of the drain on the volunteers, so, yes, I think we would have plenty enough volunteers. So I wanted to speak that directly.
Okay, 'cause if, if I may, if I may?
Sure.
Okay. Um, okay, 'cause, um, well, I think you've answered my question, but there are other parts of it. I mean, there's a lot of parts to the homeless situation, and, um, and I think you've pretty much answered it. I'll save my other questions for another time. Thank you.
I didn't mean to preempt you. If you, if you've got that question, you ask it. I'd just say, if you could get it concise, it would be good.
As concise as it can be.
Okay, okay. Anyone else? No? Thank you. I, I do have one question, and I, it doesn't need to be a huge answer, but it's something we talked about at a workshop. What role do you want the city to play in this?
We want help with the building.
Financing?
Financing, or a building itself.
Provide a building?
We, um, either provide a building, or the financial help to put a down payment on a building.
And then you see repaying the city for that, and, and managing it from that point? What do you want the council to, to do?
I think in the beginning, we need to get something going. So establish buildings, um, places that we already own, or places that we could rent. Of course, if we could build a place, we would love that, but, you know, the, the money's not there for that. So we wanna get by as little, you know, with as little help from you guys as possible, but we need a location, and we do need some funding. We got by with feeding, how many, hundreds and hundreds of people, with virtually no interplay with the city on that. And we think that the, based on the fact that the homeless, um, does hurt business, that the homeless does cause eyesore issues for our city, it makes sense financially for the city to be invested with us in trying to make this a better place.
Okay. I, I bring it up just to say, it really is very helpful if you come with a sort of a plan, because then, we're not trying to pull stuff out of the air from our own, uh, thoughts. You are the people who are providing the service, and it's really helpful to say, when you go to Mr. Chandler and say, "Here's what we wanna talk about at council, here's what we'd like to present to council," then we can discuss how it gets paid for and what involvement we have, so...
Well, it also would depend on what expectations you would have of, from us, and what you want us to do. So it's, it's that interplay between the two agencies. So with, uh, us saying, "This is what we'd like to do," and we can tell you the, the whole, the whole pie, and you're only interested in helping a little bit.
Right, but that's where you, I think you need to start.
That's where we need to just sit down and talk in private council.
Okay. Great. Thank you, guys.
And we're all available for that, and this is the board sitting here over here.
Welcome, sir.
There are more chicken than I am.
Okay, one last question. This, you don't have to answer now, but if you, um, would mind, uh, talking with your, with your board about it, um, would you be interested in, in a big-picture, overall consortium of all the interested players that all need a space? Could you share a space with other organizations that can provide services?
We had every intention of doing so. Thank you.
And I give credit to Riley for his idea of a one-shop stopping. You know, you come in, you need all your services, you can go to this booth, and you can take care of your DMV requirements, or you can go over to this booth, we can get you your health insurance. Go over to this booth, we can teach you how to write a resume. Go over here, get the clothing. So yes, in the big picture, the sky's the limit, and we could talk, me and Amanda could talk here as off for hours. On our, on our big plan, we just want a piece, a little tiny piece of a place to stop it.
Yes, please.
Um, can you put your, your plan on paper?
I believe we, I'm not sure that they got them, but I thought that we've, um, Richard Gartrell, uh, gave, um, Homeless Solutions' proposal to you. Now, Richard got sick, so he was unable to...
I think if we could see something, it, it would really help, you know, expand, and we can see, uh, see what, how it works, how it interacts.
My best recommendation was, let's make a date, get together, and do this, um, behind closed doors, and hammer out what's that, what you guys expect and what we need.
I'd say stay in touch with, uh, Mr. Chandler, and maybe we can move forward on that, so... Thank you all for your work. Uh, we know it's not easy, and, and you're doing it out of love, and, uh, we thank you for that.
It's not a fun proposition, as Mr. Gartrell said. Working with the homeless is messy, and it's not easy, but thank you.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well done. Uh, if everyone is kinda done and wants to leave, we'll go ahead and just, you can go, uh, just to save the noise level, but we'll give you a second to poke her out.
Thanks.
Don't have me, stay for the fun. Well, let's think the conversation's outside. There you go. Thank you. Okay. Moving on. We're at the public hearing's public comment section. Public hearing, you receive public comment regarding adoption of the 2016 Lincoln City Parks and Recreation Plan, uh, rec, sorry, Lincoln City Parks and Recreation System Plan, planning filed CPA two-zero-one-seven-zero-one. Ron, I'm gonna have to ask you to either take it out or turn it off, one of the two. Thanks. Okay. Ms. Nicholson.
Thank you. Um, yes, um, I am here to present the 2016 Parks and Recreation System Plan. I was here in January with a resolution to adopt, and the council decided that it would be preferable to adopt by ordinance, officially making it part of the, uh, co, city's comprehensive plan. So we have been since then to the Planning Commission, and, uh, the Planning Commission gave, uh, unanimous recommendation to adopt, and so, um, tonight, um, is your public hearing, and, uh, I thought I would start out with just a little bit of background. The Park Board was part of the Project Advisory Committee, and, uh, the Park Board also unanimously voted at the end of the year to recommend approval of the plan. I gave this presentation, base, and, uh, review of the contents of the plan, um, at your meeting on January ninth, and then I did a workshop for the Planning Commission, because they hadn't been involved previously, and gave the same presentation, and, and, and then I followed up by giving the same presentation at their public hearing. So, um, I guess I will ask you, um, it, the plan is part of the packet, it's online, it's been online, it's also been available in paper, uh, at City Hall, and I'm, I'm wondering if you would like to have the presentation and make it officially part of your public hearing record for the ordinance, or whether, um, I should do an abbreviated form and talk specifically about, uh, what's in the ordinance and the findings? And you could answer that now, or you could wait until I'm partway through?
The answer is the abbreviated version.
Okay, is everyone okay with that?
I've, I've heard it twice, and it's wonderful.
Oh, well, thank you.
I was waiting for the movie.
For purposes...
That's right.
For purposes of the record, could we just have the council incorporate the previous presentation into the record? I mean, it has been seen about three times, so, but...
Do you need a motion to do that?
A motion to incorporate, specifically incorporate into the land use record, the presentation, so we can just put it in the file?
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Pacello.
Okay, then. Um, so what I will present tonight is, um, one through three, the criteria for approval of the ordinance and the findings, and we'll skip the contents. Uh, the ordinance, uh, first section says that, um, the plan is hereby adopted and supersedes all previous Parks and Rec master plans. Section two says the, um, the Parks and Rec System Plan, adopted by Section One, is hereby made a part of the Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan. And paragraph three, or section three, sorry, um, it actually, uh, says that we're going to delete the existing policies for Parks and Recreation in the comprehensive plan and replace it with the new policies. And I'm going to run through what those policies are, so you understand what we're getting rid of, and what we're changing, and, and what's new. Uh, this is the cover for the nineteen-eighty-four Comprehensive Plan. It's been amended since then, but basically, it's the same document. Um, in this plan, um, the Parks and Rec goals and, uh, policies are underneath the Public Services and Utilities goal. Um, that's basically to arrange and develop a timely, orderly, and efficient arrangement of, uh, public facilities and services that complicate, um, complement the area. We really didn't change this. Um, we did not change the overall policies for the public facilities goal either. Decentralize public facilities where appropriate, utilize extension to control growth, work with utility companies, um, that's not so much about Parks and Rec, and to require new developments to pay for sewer, uh, service extensions. Now, we get to, um, paragraph three of that, um, overall goal, and that is the current Parks and Recs policies. So, um, the first one is to provide recreation facilities and activities for all ci, citizens. And, um, then I will show you what the new, um, policy is for the 2016 plan. And then I will show you what the new policy is for the 2016 plan. It is basically the same thing, and it says, but we've added at the beginning of this, subject to the adoption of capital improvement plans and the local budget process under state and local law, and we add the language that reflects the new 2016 Parks and Recreation Plan. We added the first part, first language there, that makes it contingent on adoption of CIP and a local budget process, to make sure that there wasn't any confusion that by having this plan meant that we had to do everything in the plan, because that, of course, is our goal, but it may be difficult at sometimes to manage to make it all happen in the next 20 years. Secondly, the policy is to maintain a Parks and Rec Committee of citizens and professional staff to review parks and recommend improvements and properties for park acquisition. Again, this one is basically the same. This is the 2016 version. And then, number 3 policy is to provide areas for high-intensity recreation, and then it lists some examples. In our 2016 version, we also mention to maintain open space for passive recreation and protection of sensitive ecosystems. Number 4 in the existing policies is that we will preserve publicly-owned beachfront property and undeveloped right-of-way as public beach accesses and viewpoints. And basically, we say the same thing here. We say that the city shall not vacate undeveloped rights-of-way or convey property that has potential as a beach access or viewpoint. So, it's actually a little bit, I kind of abbreviated the previous one, it was truncated a little bit. It said specifically that the city could not vacate without the approval of the Parks Board, and so this one just makes it very clean, it just says, we won't do it. And then, number 5, determine the feasibility of boating facilities on Selette's Bay and with the Lincoln County School District, and work with private and public agencies for various opportunities, and work with community groups and citizens to encourage development of cultural enrichment programs and activities. So, in this case, we replace that with one policy that says, we'll continue to work with partners and develop new partnerships for sharing existing resources and providing new and improved facilities, recreation opportunities, and developing cultural enrichment programs and activities. Okay, the criteria for approval of the new plan are, is consistency with the statewide planning goals, there are 19, and with our Lincoln City's comprehensive plan goals, and there are 12 of those. Statewide plan, and I'm not going to go through every one, they are in your, in Exhibit B, in your packet. I am going to touch on the ones that are most relevant, and if you want to ask me about other ones, we can talk more about findings. But the statewide planning goal 2, and the comprehensive plan goal number 1, are both about land use planning. Back when we first adopted our comprehensive plan, the Land Conservation and Development Commission acknowledged Lincoln City's comprehensive plan as complying with state planning goals. The development and adoption of the 2016 Parks and Recreation System Plan and these proposed amendments follow the decision-making process and framework established by the city's comprehensive plan. Consequently, it is also consistent with the state goal. Planning staff mailed notice to the Department of Land Conservation and Development on January 30th, and so these findings alone provide an adequate factual base for action conforming to the established land use planning process and framework consistent with goal 2. But also, I want to mention that preparation of the new plan complied with statewide and city goals by considering previous park plans, the Lincoln City Comp Plan, other city plans, and plans of other jurisdictions. The state, the staff has reported progress and results of the park planning process to the funding agency, the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department, gave us a $40,000 grant. We have been reimbursed for $36,000 of that, and they're just waiting for us to complete the project. And we also worked with the Oregon Parks Department. We had a staff person who is in charge of the beaches here in Lincoln City as part of our Project Advisory Committee. So... Somehow, I've lost my place, but I think I can do it with the paper. Okay, statewide planning goal 1 and comprehensive plan goal 2 are about, no, I can't. They are about citizen involvement. And this was a very good process, I think, for citizen involvement. We tried very hard to involve people who had lots of different interests in parks and recreation in the city. We had a great group of people working on it. The project management team was Lila Bradley, Public Works Director, Ron Chandler, of course, the city manager, Richard Townsend, Planning Director, Gail Kimberling, the manager of the Community Center, and we had Ed Dreistat from a visitor convention bureau, because we also considered the needs of visitors, tourists to the community, as well as our own residents. So, we have the former city council here, the one before January, and we should also add the adopting city council. We could add the Planning Commission, because they have now studied it and given their recommendation. The Parks Board was part of the Project Advisory Committee, and we also had people from lots of other community organizations who were part of that committee. We included, on our first day after we had a kickoff, including Chester Norikas, who was the liaison for the council, and Scotty Scotten, who was the Park Board Chair Pro Tem. We had stakeholders, I think we had about 25 stakeholders, who we divided up into eight interest groups, and they, we made sure that they all had a chance to talk to the consultants about the needs of their constituents, and some of their hopes and desires for the plan and for the future of parks and recreation. We also had many other people on the city staff involved, and our design team was Greenworks, a consulting firm, landscape architecture firm in Portland. And they had some engineering staff, they had community involvement specialists, and architecture also, a little bit of time from all of those people. Here is our schedule. Basically, it was a one-year planning process. It started about a year ago at the end of March, and we were basically done with the draft plan at the end of November. And here are some pictures from our public involvement. This was pack meeting number 1, and we were all mapping out maybe where we lived, but also where we recreated, and where we thought we should, we needed recreation. We held, and that was a public event, too, that was basically the same activity. We had us open house 2, which was during the Sandcastle Contest in Taft, and we followed up with a second meeting where we had an opportunity for the public to come in right before our next Project Advisory Committee meeting. We spent a day with the St. James Santiago School here in the council chambers, and this is not that particular day, but it was a picture that I had of them, and I didn't have one from this. But they let us know what their favorite activities were, and they made a whole list of suggestions and what we might do, or an offer for parks and recreation, and they even designed parks of their own. Back in the fall of 2015, we had James Rojas come, and James Rojas was, is a citizen involvement expert. He's from the LA area, he's Hispanic, but we were disappointed that he didn't speak Spanish. But we had other people who did speak Spanish, and so we went to this high school. This was really started about the Nell Scott Gap Refinement Plan, but we found that when we were having these discussions about people's favorite memories and people's ideal communities, that so often, they revolved around recreation space and recreation opportunities. So, this was at the high school, in the leadership class. We spent a couple hours there. We also had an event at La Roca Restaurant, and we had events at the first public open house at the, no, I'm sorry, I'm confusing that, but this was at the community center. We had a number of groups come in that day. So, then we have findings for the other most relevant goals. Natural resources, scenic and historic areas, and open spaces. The statewide goal is to conserve open space and protect natural and scenic resources, and of course, this plan is all about that. And... The plan celebrates open spaces purchased with $3.1 million of Lincoln City taxpayers' money raised through a bond issue in the 1990s, and it advocates for the open spaces' continued preservation and improvement. The open spaces contain some of the city's most environmentally sensitive areas. The plan also identifies the scenic beach accesses and addresses ways to service, protect, and improve them. Then, we have the city goal, which is very similar, to achieve a balance between the need to provide housing and services and the need to protect and enhance the natural environments of the city. The Parks and Recreation Plan guides the city in providing open space, parks, and beach accesses in a manner that promotes and preserves the environment, and at the same time serves the recreation needs of citizen, city residents, and guests, and it actually supports our neighborhoods for housing by providing needed facilities close to the residences. Air, water, and land resources. The Parks and Recreation System Plan advocates a standard of providing neighborhood parks and recreation facilities within a short walking distance, and providing community facilities within a short drive of all residences. Reduction in driving to parks and recreation facilities would reduce vehicle emissions, a cause of air and water pollution. Recreation needs. This is a statewide goal, and this is to provide for recreation in the state as a whole. The new plan meets the statewide planning goal by evaluating its areas and facilities for recreation and developing a plan to deal with the existing and projected demand. It does not set forth standards for expediting siting of destination resorts, as it suggests here, but it does propose ways to enhance Lincoln City as a destination for recreation. We have two economic development goals. This one is for the state, to provide adequate opportunities for a variety of economic activities vital to the health, welfare, and prosperity of Oregon citizens. And then, the city's goal, to support the tourist industry and achieve a degree of diversity in the community, which will allow a balanced economy that will in turn support an adequate level of services for all members of the community, of the area. The plan recognizes that Lincoln City's economic base is tourism, and that the city has a financial interest in making sure visitors enjoy their stay, choose to return, and recommend our vacation community to others. The plan recognizes that the city's facility should address the parks and recreation needs of tens of thousands of visitors, as well as the needs of local residents. The plan identifies ways to do this and enhance its offerings to attract new segments of the tourism market and expand the tourist season. Public facilities and services, this is the statewide goal. You've already heard me talk about the, our local goal. The statewide and the local goals are very similar. The plan proposes new parks and recreation for developing areas of the community, including the villages of Cascade Head and Nell Scott east of the highway, as well as for existing neighborhoods that have developed without sufficient facilities for parks and recreation. And aesthetics, this is a city goal. Consistent with the city's aesthetics goal, conceptual drawings in the proposed plan show several improvements that would make the city more attractive and enhance recreational activities and enjoyment of the natural environment. And then, I've lumped a few here together. We have goals on coastal shorelines, beaches and dunes, and ocean resources, both at the statewide and the local level. The plan recognizes that these resources have enormous environmental, recreational, and economic value and need protection. The plan identifies and promotes existing beach accesses for the appreciation and enjoyment of the shore and ocean. The actual beach, of course, is under the jurisdiction of Oregon Parks, and as I mentioned earlier, Oregon Parks staff was part of our committee, so they're tied together rather well. All right, so if you don't want me to go ahead and review the whole plan, I will suggest that. I have edited the plan text to address typos and errors that were raised by you at your January meeting and by others. I have not made changes to the maps or the graphics, because I didn't know how to use that software. And so, probably what we'll do when you're, when you're, have been satisfied and adopted the plan, that we can, or at least that we know definitely what the language is going to be, that we will go back to our consultant and ask, and pay them to make those additional changes. So, what I would ask of you then is to complete your public hearing, and then close the hearing in record. During deliberation, formulate any conditions, corrections, or changes, and then vote on this ordinance, 2017-03, Amending Comprehensive Plan Policies and Adopting the 2016 Parks and Recreation System Plan.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Can I make a couple comments?
If you want.
Well, we have shared the public hearing. This will be the time, we actually have a public hearing to conduct, but if you have questions of staff, that's fine. Comments, you might save till deliberations, so.
Who's comments to staff? Okay. Now?
If you have questions of staff, ask them now. If it's just comments, we'll take that up in just a little bit. Does that work?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll wait.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you very much.
Your Honor, I'm not sure if you opened the public hearing, but maybe you did, and I just missed it, but we need to.
I did not.
Open it, incorporate Deb's staff report, and then ask the public if they want to comment. There was a script there.
Ready, rock, and roll. Just remind me to incorporate that stuff. Okay, so, it is now 7:15 PM, we can turn the lights back on, too. The public hearing is now open to allow public comment regarding adoption of the Lincoln City Parks and Recreation System Plan, making that plan a part of the Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan, and adopting new policies in the Public Services and Utility Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan regarding parks and recreation. The 2016 Parks and Recreation System Plan is a guide for Lincoln City to use in developing and maintaining its parks and recreation system for the next 20 years. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this matter on March 7th, and forwarded a recommendation as outlined in staff's council communication. The city council's role in this legislative process is to consider any written or oral testimony, as well as information from staff, and make a final decision. The city council may adopt Planning Commission recommendation, may adopt a different recommendation, or may take any other action, including declining, to make any ordinance revisions. The applicable criteria by which the plan will be evaluated by the Planning Commission and City Council are conformity? Are inconformance with the statewide planning goal? Is that what we meant to say? All right. Goal aid in particular, conformity with the unamended portions of the comprehensive plan, goals, policies, and land use map, and applicable provisions of the Lincoln City Municipal Code. Appeals to the Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA, are limited to persons who have presented written and/or oral testimony at the hearings before the Planning Commission and/or City Council. The failure to raise an issue at the public hearings is in person or by letter, or the failure to provide sufficient specificity to allow the council an opportunity to respond to the issues precludes an appeal to LUBA on that issue. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly. Please speak directly to the microphone and begin by stating your name only. If you also have any written testimony to submit into the record, please write a copy to the recorder over here. Will the staff please present their report? Yeah, we, yeah, I jumped right past it, didn't I? I did. I apologize. And so, yeah, so can I get a motion to incorporate?
Move to incorporate the staff's presentation into the public hearing. Second.
Motion second, discussion. Hearing none, all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Sorry, I just jumped right over that. Susan, that's your job, isn't it, to keep me in line on this stuff? All right. And we went past the question part. Okay, now is the time for the public comment and testimony. Each person may have up to three minutes to provide comment. Please state your name only for the record. And we will start back. Tabitha already had her time. So we're going to go right to, feather. Feather cigarette? She did.
My name's Feather Herzick, and I'm with the Parks Board. My name's Feather Herzick, and I'm with the Parks Board. I'm here today to urge your support to adopt the 20-year Parks and Rec Plan because this city is in serious need of attention, upgrades, and additional Parks and Rec opportunities and facilities for our visitors and our residents. I hear from fellow parents and grandparents, the need for more parks within their neighborhoods that are within walking distance. That's a really big thing I hear a lot. And then also, as you've heard from Deb several times, that the Parks Board has reached out and learned what our community needs and wants. And we have seen a lot of enthusiasm and a lot of motivation and great ideas to address and grow our city Parks and Rec opportunities. And just to name a few, as you already know, but some things that I hear a lot often in my circle, which is a pretty big circle because I've been here a really long time, is that we have that need for the neighborhood parks that we can walk to where there's a big condensed amount of families. And of course, a dog park, which we've heard a lot about. And a teen center, a place where teens can go where it's safe and it's out of the weather and potentially maybe for mentorship and things like that, maybe education opportunities for young kids to learn from, you know, people who are qualified, maybe piano teachers who want to volunteer their time, culinary, people who want to teach kids how to do culinary activities and cater. Maybe they can run their own, you know, with supervision. Maybe they can run their own deli and learn how to eat and choose healthy foods. So that's, you know, some things that are, I feel, a potential in our Parks master plan for the future. So I see a lot of motivation and, and interest in that. So therefore, I urge you to adopt the passing of this Parks and Rec Plan because I think it's a really great one. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Appreciate it. Cheryl?
It's your turn. Thank you for your patience.
My name is Cheryl Johnson. I live here in Lincoln City and I'm coming to ask your support for a dog park. I've been, after been trying to get a dog park here, I realize, I look back, my dog was a year old when I started this. She is now six. And I just think there's a need for it in our community. It allows for, encourages responsible pet ownership. It's a place where the dogs and the owners can come. The dogs can get exercised. One of the leading causes of dogs being turned into shelters is destructive behavior. And, you know, when the dog can be exercised, because not a lot of, not everybody can run with their dogs. So I think that that's an important thing. And it's also a safe place, you know, for both the dog and people, that there's no cars and dogs aren't running at loose. It's a place that they can be fenced in the area and be allowed to run. Lincoln City, you know, we have lots of motels on that, and more and more people are traveling with their pet, with their dogs. And our, a lot of the motels and hotels are pet friendly. There are, I know when Patty was here, when she had Paws in the Sand, she said daily people would come in and ask her where there was a dog park here in Lincoln City. And I just think that there is a need for that. And I know I've started a Facebook page on this several years back, and it amazes me that people still look at it even though there's not any activity. I mean, we're not really posting a whole lot of it, and people still are checking into it because people are interested in that. So anyway, I just ask your support in that with the parks.
Thank you, Cheryl. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming forward. And Sandy.
I'm Sandy Gruber. And just for full disclosure, I work for the city, but I'm here as myself. I support passage of this park plan. I think it's a good plan for, for making Lincoln City the best place we can be. And I'm really here to encourage you that once you pass it, that you look at building facilities in the south end of town as soon as possible, since there's kind of a dearth of anything in the south end of town. And going a step further, I'd say I'd love that to be a dog park, since I don't have kids, and I know that's very personal. But I would love to see a dog park because we're as much a dog owners or as much a part of the community as anyone else. And I really envision that as a low-hanging fruit, not a whole lot of infrastructure needed, and it could get done and get something moving forward and make us just the best pet-friendly town we can have on the coast. I did call the Lincoln County Animal Shelter. There are 900 dogs registered in Lincoln City with a Lincoln City address. And if you figure there are probably a third of those, that, a third of that number, probably more, that don't register their animals, and people who have dual homes and some of them are registered in Portland or Salem or someplace else. We have a lot of dogs in this town. And we have a dog waste problem in a lot of places. If we can start to gather people at one location where it's easy to pick up after their dog, I think that would be better, keep our beaches cleaner, and show that we love everybody who comes here, whether you're with a dog or without. So I encourage you to pass this park plan, and let's move forward.
Great. Thank you, Sandy. Appreciate it. Anyone else who did not sign up who'd like to speak on this subject, please come forward.
I'm 6'4", so I just have to, okay. Jay Roloff. I'm here because of my background with the Congregational Church. I'm chairman of the outreach group there, and I'm getting involved with a lot of what the church does, one of which is panel discussions on important issues. And I've listened, I was here in January when this plan was presented. And in fact, I think I heard Deanna ask a question about affordable housing and how it folds into the park plan. But I'm here to say that I understand that this is a conflict. There's a conflict between trying to preserve open space and then addressing the issue like, well, we got to have dog parks. That's important. But one of the major issues that faces our town is affordable housing. And whether you call it workforce housing or housing for the homeless, which is down towards the bottom, or affordable housing above the workforce housing level, which is also a problem, it's huge. And I just don't see or sense that in this plan, where they are saying that they are really concerned about open space, that other than one paragraph I saw up on the screen, there's a lot of incorporation into the plan thinking about the need for affordable housing. We just don't seem to have a lot of space in this town for that. So when we allocate space as open space, part of that allocation process, I would think, would encompass, my goodness, this huge need we have for affordable housing. So I would encourage that as you go towards the approval process in the plan, that each one of you individually are satisfied that the plan does in fact take into account this huge need, which is every bit as important as dog parks, for affordable housing, places to put, places for people to live that they can afford. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Appreciate it. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor? We did have someone talk about the parks during public comment, and she's left. Is there a way to incorporate her testimony in the record?
Yeah, if you would specifically incorporate her testimony, that's how you would do it. A motion to specifically incorporate.
Do I have her name?
Yeah, I'm sorry. That was Tabitha, is it Noak? Noark? I've got an N-O-W-A-R-K.
Tabitha.
I believe that's it. Tabitha.
I, I move to include in the record the testimony given by Tabitha Noark earlier in the meeting tonight under public comment.
Second. Motion second, discussion. Hearing none, all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you for that reminder.
Mayor? I believe there was also testimony that was emailed to each of you from Raylene Erickson, and she asked for that to be included in the record as well.
Okay. All right. Any comments from representatives of public agencies? Oh, we got to do the motion? Okay, go ahead.
I move to include the email from Raylene Erickson that was received today regarding the Parks Master Plan.
A second.
Sure. Motion in a second, any discussion?
Yes. I think there's also another testimony from Joe Hinton that was included.
That was in the record already.
That was in the record. Okay.
We also had testimony from Bob Hathaway. That was emails. I believe that's in your packet. We had one from Jamison, who is-
Can we just do a blanket, all of her email to us?
Those are already in the record.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. All right. But the, Raylene Erickson was received today, and it was not in the record. So I move to include Raylene Erickson's email in the record.
Anyone else's while we're at it? Okay. So I got a motion.
Second.
Motion in a second, discussion. Hearing none, all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay. Any comment from representatives of public agencies? If there's no further comment, is there a motion to close the public hearing in the record? Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. And the record? Does that cover it, too? Just that one? Yeah, you just moved to cover, close the hearing, so we got a motion closing the record.
I move to close the record. Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. What is the pleasure of the council?
I would like to, if I could, enthusiastically move to approve ordinance 2017-03, amending the comprehensive plan policies and adopting the 2016 Parks and Recreation System Plan.
If I could say, at this point, if you're going to, you wouldn't actually approve the ordinance, you would just say, let's proceed with adoption this evening, and then I'll do the ordinance reading as required by the charter.
Okay. I amend whatever he said.
All right. Fair enough.
Yeah, I, I have a couple of comments.
Feel free.
Okay, thank you. I was relieved to review the plan.
Hang on a second. Hang on a second. Just so I'm clear. Procedurally, we had a motion, but it wasn't a proper motion, so we're just going to let that die for lack of a second? I'm a little lost. Okay, so is that, you good with that? Okay, real. All right.
I was relieved to see that most of the corrections I had to the plan have been made. One of the corrections was that the city did the dredging to D River, and that was corrected to say that the city contracts with Devils Lake Water Improvement District to dredge the channel. However, there's a typo in that sentence, so I will submit that to Ms. Nicholson. The other inconsistency that I see in the plan, and it is on the map, so I think it's a map program thing, is I think we need a consistent name to that place down in Taft that the school used to sit at. It's called the Old High School Site. It's called the Schooner Creek School Site. We have called it the Taft Park Site. I think we need to come up with a, a name for that, so that it's consistent through the plan, so that people in 10 years know what we're talking about.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is that, have we acquired that property? So why don't we just call it the property on what you, what you call it, Street? I mean, it's on a street. It's on the north side of that. It's the north 50, you know, whatever. I mean, it doesn't have to be a name, does it?
Call it Susan Walkie.
No, 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 no.
I mean, it's not ours.
No, I, I understand that. It is important to kind of start streamlining this process. I understand what you're saying.
Well, it's, it's just that it's referenced as different things, but it's talking about the same property. And I think it needs to be consistent in the plan.
A1. Start there. What is it? What? What is its county code or, you know what I mean? Like, what is it listed as on the deed or something? You know what I mean? Like, what is it officially? That's a good point. And just- Maybe Mr. Chandler could work something up for us, a name or two, to keep things consistent.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Anyone else? Well, the only thing I want to say, and I'll probably come off as the bad guy, as I might want. I, I'm all for parks, okay? But I lived through Portland and their park development. And they would acquire land, call it a park, and there it would rot. And I just want to make sure that as we move forward, that we allocate funds for its maintenance, that we have a plan to, to keep it within the idea of what we want it to be, that it doesn't become a restroom, that it doesn't become a place for crime to, to thrive. That's all I want to say then. It's the thing I'll be keeping an eye out for, that we just don't call it a park and leave it alone. If we're going to call it a park, then we take responsibility for it and maintain it as a park for everybody.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Think we can do that in the budget, maybe?
I hope so.
I don't know. I haven't been through that process.
You know, we're still talking 20 years down the road. It could be another park in 15 years. I just want to make sure, always keep that in mind. We can't just call it a park. We can call it a natureland, we can call it a wetland or whatever, but anyway, that's just my two cents worth.
I, I, okay. I just want to say that I think this was excellent work by the Parks Board and the Project Advisory Committee and the consultants and Deborah. And I just want to call out Deborah because if you look at the park that she designed, she should have done this whole thing, as if she had all the time in the world. But I'm just saying, that was, that's a, I, I don't know where that came from, but it was excellent, and I just wanted to call her out on that. And I also want to say that I was very impressed with the, with the amount and the depth of the public involvement for this plan. It was really well done. And I have my favorite parts, too, but I'll save that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Can I ask, is there unanimous consent to proceed with the ordinance readings?
Yes, 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 yes.
Your Honor, counsel, this is first reading of ordinance 2017-03, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan, revising comprehensive plan goals and policies, amending individual public facility policies for public services and utilities, providing for revised park and recreation policies, and adopting the 2016 Parks and Recreation System Plan as part of the Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan. Ask for approval of first reading, and if it's unanimous, we'll proceed.
So I'll move.
Motion, looking for a second?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none. Did I have to roll call this one? Yeah.
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
Dick Anderson?
Yes.
Riley Hoagland?
Yes.
Deanna Hinton?
Yes.
Judy Gasper?
Yes.
Susan Walkie?
Yes.
And Kip Horn?
Before I proceed with second reading, I'll just note that Section 8 of the ordinance does refer to codification, and in that section, it authorizes the city recorder to make corrections of typographical errors. And so I believe that there's authorization to correct the errors that have been identified, and I believe that would include the map errors as well. So if there's no objection, this is second reading of ordinance 2017-03, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan, revising comprehensive plan goals and policies, amending individual public facility policies for public services and utilities, providing for revised park and recreation policies, and adopting the 2016 Parks and Recreation System Plan as part of the Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have a Parks Plan.
Yahoo. Is there gonna be a party?
Feel free. Okay, so moving on. Public hearing to receive public comment. Okay. Well, I'm gonna read it anyway. To receive public comment regarding the proposed Northeast 36th Street and West Devils Lake Road sewer reimbursement district. We have public hearing for the formation of the reimbursement district. Northeast 36th Street and Devils Lake Road reimbursement district has been advertised for this evening. City staff has requested a postponement of the hearing to April 10th, 2017. All parties required to be notified by the code have been advised of the postponement. Is there a motion to postpone and continue the hearing to April 10th, 2017?
Your Honor, I move to continue the public hearing on the Northeast 36th Street and West Devils Lake Road Sewer Reimbursement District to April 10th, 2017, 6 o'clock this location.
A second.
Motion in the second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Oops. Lost it. Yeah. Special Order of Business, right? Instruction contract award? Is that what I meant? Dewatering facility?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Lila Bradley, Public Works Director for the audience out there. This is our dewatering facility at our wastewater treatment plant. It's the one that we have actually purchased the building, and so this is for the construction contract award. And so the project, I'll do a little bit of our objective. The project is needed to address the city's biosolids removal needs at the wastewater treatment plant. And in August 2016, the city purchased the centrifuge equipment and a prefab building for this project. And so this contract is to construct the building, install the equipment, and once it's complete, the city will be able to process our biosolids by dewatering them to a 20% solid consistency or cake that can be transported to the landfill. And so historically, the city had land-applied liquid biosolids on fields in the Sletz Valley, and we have been contracting to have about 2 million gallons per year of liquid Class B at approximately 2% to 3% solids, or 97% water dredged, screened, hauled, applied to those fields from one or two sledge-holding lagoons at the wastewater plant. So this process has really served us well over the last 10 to 15 years. We've lost, unfortunately, we've lost some of our fields and have faced challenges from neighbors of the fields that do not want the biosolids in their area any longer. And we've also lost fields due to landowners, you know, selling or no longer wanting biosolids. So in 2015, we only applied about 600,000 out of the 2 million gallons produced. And in 2016, we found there were no fields available. And that was actually due to dry weather and rain and loading of those fields. And so that's where we come to this project, and you're familiar with, you know, purchasing the centrifuge. And so we went out to bid on February 24th to put the building together, and we received six bids. Do you want to go over the bids, Stephanie, or you want me to keep going?
We, I'll go ahead. We, actually, six bids was really a good number to receive for this type of project. The highest was 605,000, the lowest, 459,948 dollars, submitted by McClure &amp; Sons, Inc. I will let you know that the, this contractor has recent experience doing a building very similar to this in Albany with the same consultant that designed this. And they had excellent, excellent experience with this contractor. So given the due diligence that we did and the feedback we got from our consultant, I feel very confident in requesting that we award the dewatering facility construction to McClure &amp; Sons for 459,948 dollars. I'm asking for a construction contingency of just 5% or 23,000. Normally, a typical construction contingency would be 10, but I think we can do it for 23,000 for a total of 482,984 dollars.
Questions?
Mr. Mayor. My question was exactly that. Why is it okay for the 5%? Is it because you feel so strongly about that they can do the work?
Yeah, we had a very detailed bid document that broke out bid items to the point where I think that 23,000 is a, we probably won't need it, but it's enough that we, you know, can continue construction if something comes up. But the full 10% didn't want to put that asset as a contingency.
Yes, please.
We've already purchased the prefab building. This is just putting the building together?
This is putting the building together and the piping. We have to pipe it into the sewer plant. And so all of those are into the footing. The footing had to be, you know, reinforced footing for the building. And then they actually moved the centrifuge, which is on site now, into the building, hook it up. And so it's a pretty complicated process.
But it doesn't include materials for the building besides the piping and the-
There are, there are extra things on the building besides just the prefab part of it that we purchased, so.
But it's mostly labor costs.
It's materials. It's that foundation.
Foundation.
The foundation is a large part of it.
I have a few questions.
All right.
When we advertise for billing, or bids, do we give the engineer's estimate with that advertisement?
Yes, because we are always asked for an engineer's estimate. And it is just that. But the contractors want to know the ballpark so they can figure out if they want to even look at the plans or not.
I ask because the, we had a bid contract for, I think, Northwest 18th, and it included the bid, the engineer's estimate. This did not include the engineer's estimate, so what was that amount?
That was an estimate. It was a range because we, they didn't give us really an estimate until they got closer to the design.
Our engineers didn't?
No. No, it was, it ranged from 250 to 500. So it was a wide, it was a wide range. And they were doing the geotech work for the foundation and, you know, different items like that that keep you from knowing what that foundation is. And so usually you give, you know, you can give an engineer's estimate so they know for their bonding and whether they really want to bid on the project.
Okay. Thank you. The amount of tankers to take the dewater, what was it, 3%? To now it will be 90? What was the percentage?
Well-
The cake will be after the centrifuge and the, after this process is completed, it will be what percentage?
20%.
20%. And the amount of tankers that we use to, when we had to take them all, I thought I was told like hundreds of tankers. So do we have an estimate of the dump trucks that it would be now in a cost savings, an offset cost savings for tankers versus dump trucks to haul that to the landfill versus transportation to the fields and?
It will probably be fairly close because we're going a further distance to take this to the landfills. But we're having a higher concentrate, so it'll probably be a wash.
And then that?
And we're not going to know exactly until, you know, we start dewatering, start the process.
And then the amount of water that we will then be removing, we're capable of handling that? That new amount of water, that's 80% more water that we weren't processing?
Right. It's the solids that we're removing. And so we've always processed the water that's in the plant. That's not an issue. It's the solids.
But when we were taking it in tankers, we were removing water, right?
Right. But we were removing so many more tankers, and that's how we got to the solids level that we needed to remove from those lagoons.
And I'm gonna interrupt for just a second, and that's all valuable information, but I want to make sure we stick to the task of, we're awarding a contract and not talking about the ancillaries. We can definitely have a discussion about that, and I'd not want-
And I do believe we have that on a workshop, you know, to discuss this more detail.
Moving forward, if we can, if you have more questions about that.
I do, but since we want to stop, we can stop.
Well, if we want more questions about the contract, we're good to go. Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
I have some, Mr. Mayor. Two weeks ago, when we had our council meeting, we had the Northwest 18th Project, I think it was.
Yeah, Northeast 18th.
Yeah, thanks. And when we got that, for the first time that I ever saw, anyway, and I might just not have been being observant, actually, you provided the mechanics of the bid. And one of the things that was concerning and just, you know, I think needed addressing is that the bids were all over the place. You'd have one company bidding 9,000 and another company bidding 39,000. And it kind of concerned me. And I asked Mr. Chandler, I don't know if he did, but to try to find out why that was occurring. Even our own estimator, our engineer's estimate, in one instance was way, way, way off. It was like 19,000 dollars and everyone else was 4,000 or 5,000. And so, I mean, it just feels like when I'm reading it, they're just throwing stuff up in the air and grabbing one.
Well, and some of the bidders, you know, each bid item, you know, they load that up with labor, man-hours. You know, it's like you can look up a piece of, a part of a sewer project and it's, you know, it's the part. It's not the labor and all of the other things and the gravel that goes in that particular spot. So they, you know, it just varies. And that's why it's always hard to, you know, get that engineer's estimate as close as we possibly can. But we do it by history and what items are usually charged, you know, for those types of things. And then we also go by the HWA standards and, like with asphalt, you know, it's a historic type thing. But if oil prices go down, then the price of tonnage goes down. So I don't know if you want to add anything for that stuff.
It just seemed to me that, I mean, it's like going in and buying a loaf of bread. One bread's $2, and right next to it is a bread for 35.
And that's why you, that's why you look at that bottom line number. It's, you know, the lowest bidder. And all of them look at their businesses differently and how they charge.
Mr. Chandler?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have been looking into that. I don't think I have a satisfactory answer with what I have, with what I have been learning other than another example besides a loaf of bread would be a mechanic that works on your vehicle. Some are lower, some are higher. They break down their costs on the way they break down their costs. And so the answer that I'm getting from, as we talk with these different contractors is, depends on the project. So I can't find a running pattern or theme through that other than contractors look at all of their variables and they set their prices.
Well, I got to thinking about this after Counselor Hoagland brought it up, and I was gonna suggest to him that maybe what he wants is to have someone come in, have a contractor come in, and kind of just break it down for us. It could be all hypothetical, but just so we can walk through it and say, oh, okay, now I understand how you arrive at these figures. Of course, you can't, or they can't speak for everybody, but am I getting close to what you're after?
No, I ran a carpentry company. I know how to bid jobs. I don't need that. I'm just, I'm just curious as to why a park costs $80 for one place and 500 for another.
I was curious about the details of it. When we talked about flagging, we talked about the, you know, how you arrive at all these different costs.
No, I'm familiar with that.
Well, I wasn't saying you weren't. I was just saying, I think for- No, I'll leave it. If you're not interested, you're not interested. That's fine. We won't drag anyone in here. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. No, they haven't made a motion.
Sorry, pull it down, please.
So we make a motion to approve?
Yes.
I have a motion to approve McClure &amp; Sons Incorporated for the total amount of 482,984 dollars.
Second it.
Motion in the second. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Williams?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
And Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, can I ask one more question?
Please.
It was interesting to get the detail. Is there a chance that we can get that in the future?
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, I guess, will we be able to see some pictures while this is going on? I'd love to see some video or something.
Certainly.
As they're doing this.
And as a reminder, you know, we have our website on LincolnCity.org. It's the orange little cone on the very first page. All of our projects are there. And we post pictures throughout the project before, during, and after.
Oh, I just phoned up.
And an update.
I can't tell you how much mileage you got with the public that one time when you presented the work that's going on in the water lines. Seeing that actually going on, I spoke to so many people who saw that and appreciated, and their stress level went so far down about how their money's being spent. So I'd encourage you to bring something to council and let the folks see what's going on.
Sure.
Thanks.
We'll be happy to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
With Mr. Chandler's approval, of course. Thanks. Okay. Discussion. Proposed ordinance on cross-connections.
This is under City Attorney, City Manager Report, and I guess I first want to answer a question you asked me earlier. And this is just, just because I like to tell the whole council the answer in case you're also getting questions. The mayor indicated he had a question about when the ordinance amending the VRD license was effective. And this is the ordinance that had the provisions in it about hot tubs and reporting the, that stuff. That was adopted in November, November 28th, so it's, that ordinance was effective December 28th of 2016. The license ordinance amendments that had to do with keeping a record of your hot tub and that kind of, testing your hot tub, that stuff. The ordinance on occupancy was adopted in December, on December 19th, and it is not effective until January 2018. And we also did an amendment on noise, the noise ordinance-related amendment, and that one became effective in October of 2016. And now to the thrilling topic of cross-connection. There is a terribly exciting Oregon administrative rule 333-061. I recommend it highly if you want to fall asleep quickly. Basically, this is, wasn't really intended to be much of a discussion. We just wanted to get this to you a little early. Sometimes you've, some of you have mentioned that, you know, like getting these ordinances and then being asked to adopt them right away, and so we wanted to get it out a little earlier. We could have just transmitted it, and I'm not saying that this ordinance isn't going to change slightly between now and the 10th. There are a couple of issues I have to work over with staff and just, I looked at a lot of other cities' cross-connection ordinances. They all- They all pretty much track the Oregon administrative rule. But my understanding is the reason why they want us to have a local ordinance as opposed to just say, follow the administrative rule, is they want us to have some teeth behind it, so it's the enforcement mechanisms. They care mostly that we will disconnect. Can I ask, who are the data's again, please? The Oregon Health Authority. Okay, thank you. So we kind of share responsibility with them and we're supposed to be coordinating with them on cross-connection. So this is just an early transmittal. In the communication, I'm asking you to read it and please give us questions by the time we get to the work session on April third. Hopefully, I'll be able to sit down with staff and we'll all agree whether or not we need to add anything or take anything out. Again, this portion of the Oregon administrative rules is not terribly exciting, so. This is more housekeeping, we haven't amended this portion of the code since nineteen ninety. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Cross-connection, this would apply to mostly businesses and are, really to anybody that has a irrigation system or a fire suppression system in their, in their operations. The cross-connection is when your water line has a part that ties off and goes to either irrigation and/or the fire suppression. What happens in those is the same as if you live on a dead-end street. The water is not circulating, it sits, it collects, you know, it settles. If that water comes back into the, into the, our water system, it will pollute it. That's what's called the cross-connection. What prevents that is a backflow preventer. It's a valve that essentially closes down and keeps the water from coming back in. That backflow preventer is supposed to be inspected annually. And if it does not, then they're in violation of the, if they, if there's something wrong with it, or it's not there, or if it's not inspected, then they're in violation of the state laws, Ms. Rapicello explained. And as he explained, this ordinance then gives us the enforcement authority to make, to require the correction of whatever it is, whether it's an inspection of it or whether it's having to repair a backflow preventer.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to say thank you for the early heads-up, I really appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
Also, how many do we have of these backflow connectors or how many do we need to purchase in order to be in accordance with the new law?
Well, responsibilities on the owner, I haven't had a chance to work with staff about if we've even surveyed how many there are out there. You know, I know that, you know, for example, in Otter Rock, they have a backflow ordinance that's dating twenty years back and they have one. So...
The only ones that we would actually have to purchase would be the ones associated with our public buildings.
Yeah, and obviously my building, I've got them in my restaurants, I have to have them, yeah. Okay, all right, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Rapicello, Mr. Chandler? Thank you all. All right, actions, if any, based on executive session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to affirm that Attorney Schmidt will continue to represent the city and all named defendants in Circuit Court, Case One-Six-CV-Two-One-Two-Seven-O.
Second it.
Motion, the second, discussion. Hearing none, I can just do a voice, yeah? All in favor, say aye.
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 Repose, hearing none, motion carries, thank you. All right, additional comments from citizens present on non-agenda items? Oh, wait, you know, I guess, I don't know if I need to do it now or later, but we didn't finish yours, obviously, your evaluation, obviously, so I have to schedule another executive session, just to let you know. Okay, additional comments from citizens present on non-agenda items? I have nothing, anyone want to comment, please?
Georgia Roloff, I just want to compliment the city on the completion of that beautiful extension of the sidewalk between where the hospital is, leading to Twenty-Second Street. It is gorgeous and it looks like it would hold a tank. It is so strong, but we waited long for it, but it was beautiful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nope, okay.
I just had a comment about that. I had a question from someone, they were concerned because they thought they saw the wood going into the marshland there, the wetlands, and I assured them it wasn't wood.
It's not the wood, it's the pipes that go down into the wetlands.
And the boardwalk is, is plastic, not wood, right?
The walkway, the planks that go across, yes, that's correct. The, all of the support, the rest on the beam is that last concealer.
Oh, I see.
Because that's another thing, I think it wouldn't be a bad idea, just a quick, a quick presentation to say, here's what it looks like, here's what's under it, so anyone driving past can then have an answer, but that's just me. Okay, what the heck was I? Announcements or comments by City Council? Discussion Eclipse Twenty-Seventeen, I don't know who, what, or why.
Counselor Hinton had asked that we put this on the agenda for a little more discussion, so.
All yours.
Yeah, I hate it. I just, I've had a few discussions in my neighborhood and the comments were pretty similar. And I just wanted to share those and then find out some more of where we are in the planning. I, before I say the comments I've heard, I just wanted to say that I have noticed that the website, I think from last night to today, when I last looked, had more information on it. I appreciate that, I think more and more and more is better. And perhaps even a link from our website to the Eclipse website, if there isn't one, I didn't see it, but maybe even on the front page. And my concern is just that, I think that those of us who know about it, know about it. I just want to make sure that all of our residents are aware of it, I know the businesses are being alerted. You're speaking at the Chamber Luncheon tomorrow about it, so that'll be another outreach and information opportunity. And I'm saying the more, the better. And also, so the things I've been hearing, of course, are about the porta-potties. And that's not a new one, but it's one that's like in all capitals for people, not enough. And the other thing I've heard about is parking. And in particular, at Rhodes End State Park, that that not be included in any information going out to park. As I stated before, that even on a nice day when it's not a holiday, that very small parking lot is full and the streets are full. So given what we expect for the eclipse, it should be off limits. And the other comment that people that I've spoken with get very excited about, and not in a good way, is the potential for fires being built on the thumb, on the knoll, in the villages. Because the people that I'm talking to are in my neighborhood. And just the reminder that Logan Road is the only road in and out of Rhodes End neighborhood. And so it's not, it's not a simple fear if there were a fire. Who knows if the emergency equipment could even get in there? Because everyone will bring extra cars and, you know, the houses will be packed, which means that parking is going to be past a premium. So I'm not sure that, that it's a good idea to, to speak about that those are places to go unless we say absolutely no fires and we mean it, post it. And also, I just want to speak up for the knoll. I've heard a lot of people talking about that to me, and, but I just want to say that the state goal too is to protect our open areas. So I just want to make sure that we do that. And I have concerns and other people have concerns about the thumb. That's very, it could be very dangerous up there and people could fall off. There's not much room up there and it's very, very steep. So I worry about safety making that available. I know that's the Forest Service land, but some coordination there might be helpful. And what else have I heard? Oh, the cleanup afterwards, do we have any idea about a budget, what it would cost? And who's doing it and what kind of coordination that would entail? And Rhodes End Neighborhood was talking about, well, they're considering, I don't know if they still are, to do a beach cleanup, much like their July fifth effort. And I don't know how far they are in that conversation. But that could branch out to a citywide event with some coordination. But there's the fear that if camping is allowed, then they may be, not be able to do the cleanup if they're talking about human waste and other non-touchables. So I guess the request is to not allow camping on the beach. And I know that that state parks, but we could work with them on that. And then I brought my fancy glasses. They're out there already, everybody should have a few pair. These are from the Oregon Coast Community College. I got these free for taking a class, so take a class and you'll get your own pair. Or you can purchase them there for three dollars, but they're great, they have the date and where you are when you saw the eclipse, so. That's, so that's kind of my intro, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please.
A suggestion that I got was, have we thought about the Taft School District? This unnamed area that we don't know what to call. Fifty or sixty cars could possibly park there, so I'm passing this along. And also to be mindful that if we send RVs up High School Drive, they won't be able to maneuver the turn at the end. So that's probably not a good idea. And that, just to remember that on the Fourth of July, ten porta-potties alone are used down in Taft on Fifty-first Street. So forty is going to be like nothing. So those are some concerns that I had.
I appreciated the comments from Shannon Locke earlier tonight and I would like to see follow-up on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hoagland?
Regarding the eclipse, these are some of the things that have come to me. The beach parking at Northwest Fifteenth and Thirty-Fifth Street? How are we going to limit how far north and west are they going to be able to park? Trash cans and recycling? An actual map of viewing locations or parking lots available? If we encourage our residents to hike, I'm sorry, ride their bike or walk for the day to work? How are you going to prove someone is going to a rented house if you're going to say, you know, locals only? The issues regarding the astronomical prices in BRDs and hotels? And I looked today and some of them from Friday to Monday, or the highest I saw was eleven thousand dollars. I know recently the Ashley Inn, I'm sorry. Liberty Inn or something is, something happened where people are booking rooms. And I'm hearing it over and over again that their booking rooms are being canceled and the rooms are being charged a thousand dollars instead of the typical one sixty. So I'm wondering if, you know, if they use our site to book the room and then it gets canceled and then it gets resold for a thousand dollars, you know, what is our responsibility or we have fault additionally?
Mr. Hoagland? That was an Expedia issue, not through our website. And there was also a motel in Kaiser that did the same thing. So it's not just Lincoln City.
Right, right. So then you have that, so then you have the higher room rates and are we going to look for the appropriate TRTs for that? pedestrian traffic, we have a lot of those walkways in the downtown area, so the safety with that. And I think that was it for, for that, yeah.
Any other comments, please?
We're ending this meeting now.
Oh, yeah, I have more comments.
I was contacted by a citizen tonight before I came to work. And apparently, he has had interactions with Mr. Chandler and also with Kathy Steer. And he asked during this time that I tell whatever audience that we have left, what an absolutely wonderful job that both of these people did working with him. And he is truly appreciative of the staff that we have here, in particular, Mr. Chandler and Ms. Steer. And I'd like to just add one thing. If those numbers are correct, and I'm not sure how they came up with the number of fifty thousand people, if that is correct, then we're having a hell of a big party for fifty thousand people. That's going to generate expenses. And I know some of the hotel rooms are going higher, almost all of them are going higher. But that's going to provide, also provide revenue to the city in order to clean up after the fifty thousand person, or fifty-five, fifty thousand person. So we can't just write that off, it's going to be a hell of an expense and a big mess, so.
Anyone else?
I do, I also have more. You could go. Okay, thanks. So, I'm all mixed up now. I read that we are not going to be doing the cathodic, the bridge work is not being done due to, is that something I can talk about?
No, we are proceeding forward with the bridge work, the cathodic protection. The question that had been asked, I think I know what you're talking about, was the, a water line that's on the bridge over the D River. That water line has been abandoned and so it does not need to be moved like the one down in Schooner Creek.
Okay, well, that's good. I also went to the Lincoln County Transit Advisory Committee meeting and I would just like to give an update about that. By all accounts, there was, I don't know, many, many, many different organizations, many different cities, counselors, representatives, community spokespeople and all that stuff. And by all accounts, we have really great, we get a lot of great services for the amount that they have to pay. Some of the things that I brought up, and they had forms and lots of data and all that good stuff. So one of the things that, what they did was through their surveys that in the summer, their ridership does not go up. And so it kind of showed that tourism, tourists don't use the services. But some of the things I suggested that were brought to me with riders was the rider safety, increased frequency, the seven days a week, the reduced time between connections. So this was just the first meeting to say kind of, this is our wish list, so. So there's many, more meetings to come up, but it was really good to see and to participate in. And so I'm excited to see more of that. Oh, and the bill, Measure Twenty-One dash one-seven-seven, which is the spraying of the bill, I read some of those things. And so some of my questions from our point of view, whether it passes or not, I just had questions of how much upriver and north and south of Schooner Creek do we own? And the status of the lands around it, whether they're privately or publicly? This bill for the spraying only deals with private land. And so I was just curious about that and the processes of the different chemicals that they're spraying versus our water treatment capabilities, making sure that atrazine is successfully removed from, you know, whatever that, all that's, I don't know all the technical terms, but, so that was one of the things that, you know, was brought to me. There, people are noticing that it's heavily cut up north and south of Schooner Creek, so. So that was it on that.
I have a few things. Mr. Hoagland brought up Measure Twenty-One, one-seventy-seven, which is county ban on aerial pesticides. The county commissioners have come out against that. I understand that Newport has scheduled a public comment time during their council meeting and I wanted to open it up to discussion by council to see if we wanted to do the same thing.
I would be in support of that. I would be in support of that.
It's two of us.
I mean, I don't know.
Well, I think maybe bring it up again and give us the bill and the pros and cons, because I couldn't speak.
Well, this is just to give public a chance to air their viewpoints.
Right.
Yeah. It would just be a chance for people to talk about it.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I just thought you were asking me to make a statement tonight.
No, no. The, the commission, the county commissioners made a decision so that, in time, so that it could be put into the voter pamphlet, and it's beyond that time. So it would just be a time for people to be able to voice their feelings.
Do we need to get that to you on for something, or the council wants that to come forward, or?
I would suggest on this one that you give me the direction to put it on an agenda, and I will do that.
Councilor Anderson, you?
Well, I guess I'm wondering, are you opening up a door here you don't want to open up? So there are plenty of, there's usually two sides to every bill, and they, or every proposal, they have public forums if they're smart. So I, I'm not sure what it is that is being suggested to use public amenities here to allow people to voice pros and cons, and is that our role as city council? I'm just, you know, so that means every, every next initiative you're going to stage for them? I'm just kind of curious...
That's a good point.
Where this goes. The subject matter, great to have it aired, but is that our responsibility and forum?
Makes sense. Because you can have a forum of your own.
And Mr. Mayor, I wonder too if then the next step would be asking for a resolution and support or not support of it? I mean, I don't know where this is going.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. I just want some feedback.
If someone's got a room, you can have the forum.
Newport was doing, okay, and then, let's see, I've got two other things. There was a comment made during the warming shelter presentation that we should have a discussion behind closed doors, and I just wanted to emphasize that we don't do things behind closed doors. If we have a discussion, it will be in the open at one of our work sessions, I assume. And like Riley, I, after I was appointed to the Cascades West Council of Governments' Board of Directors, I attended a meeting on March 16th. One of the things we did that day was appoint the Cascade West Area Commission on Transportation. And as we had appointed them already, Mr. Anderson's our primary representative and Mayor Williams is our alternate to that committee. We approved the financial report and reviewed the budget. Will be, will be having that up for a decision next, next time we meet, which is May. We only meet every other month, so my next meeting's in May. One of the things that we do at the end of the meeting is talk about what's happening in our city, so if anybody has things that they want me to report, please let me know.
I don't know if it's in our parameter, but I'm concerned about the bond for the fire department. I know there was something in the newspaper about it, but I'm not sure there's enough information, or if something should be presented to city councils so that it might be shared with everyone. Just a thought.
Mr. Mayor, if I may touch on that as well, is there a document or a form that we can have as far as all the taxing entities and the percentages that they charge per $1,000?
We can put that together.
Thank you.
Two questions, Ron. Update on the Schooner Creek boring project?
I'm bringing up our public horse director on that one.
Okay.
The water boring project at Schooner Creek Bridge is close to total completion. They're finishing up the sides of the roads, trying to get that open back up, the pullouts for, for the rest of spring breaks coming up, and they've started the sewer line that you approved, and so that one will be going much quicker than the water line, because it's a smaller, much smaller line. And so everything's moving along, and the line tested, they do back T tests on it, and chlorine tests, and pressure tests, and so all of, all of that passed, and so it's moving, moving ahead.
And we're going parallel with this other line, so is that, still, we're still going to have that pullout, it's still going to be tied up for how long?
A short period of time.
Month?
I don't have the schedule.
Before some?
Well, we're, we're opening a good portion of it up already, so it's, it's just a smaller project.
Okay. And then the, the grassy area where the gazebo is?
Yeah.
Still going to be occupied?
You're probably, you're probably right. You could say, you know, 30 more days for, for that, since we added that project.
Okay, great. Just want to, I've just been happy, I mean, as I drive by to see, it's tight, it's organized, I see it moving ahead constantly, and it's just been really nice.
Yeah, they, they have all the tie-ins completed at 62nd Street, 63rd Street.
Okay.
And so, and also, the water line has been taken off the bridge, and so we're, we're ready to go.
Thanks a lot, I appreciate it. And then, as I was looking at this last bid, the public art section pops up to me. Can you give me an idea of how much is in that fund?
Last time I looked at, it was about $27,000 to $28,000.
Great, thanks. Those were my questions. Anything, oh, we have a work session coming up Monday, is that right, the 3rd?
Monday at 2:30.
Monday 2:30, we will be discussing...
Sewer bonds, the sewer capital, and your priorities.
Fantastic. If there's nothing else?
[inaudible]
May God bless you all, may God bless Lincoln City. We are adjourned.